Good morning, everybody. Welcome. We'll call this a meeting of the Community Emergency Services Committee to order. Bow with me, please. Our most merciful and mighty Lord, we come to you today and thank you for so many blessings, so many things that you have left for us to be stewards. We thank you for all of the blessings. We thank you for the people who protect us, who keep us free and keep us safe. Our nation and some of our citizens are in peril. We ask your bosom for their protection and thy rod for those who have put them in danger. Thank you, Lord, again, and come reside with us as we consider the matters before us. Amen. Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which we are a nation, God.
We have all three commissioners here. We have the amendments from the previous meetings, gentlemen. Have you reviewed them? What's your pleasure?
Accept.
I move.
Mr. Johnson, is the agenda all set?
Leave it ready for approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have any presentations this morning? Nothing in consent. I will go to debate with new business. Mr. Luton, I think you're up, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. First item today for consideration is the American Cornhole Major South Atlantic Conference Agreement. This would be the fourth year that we're doing this. We had good growth from year one to two, took a little bit of a step back last year because of COVID. So we hope to pick this back up and continue its growth, maybe 200 Cornholeers. Say that. And a lot of those, I'd say 70.
They have their own national tournament now, be careful.
I should have thought about that before I was going to call them. Seventy percent or so are coming from out of town, so let's say two or three nights. So it's pretty good hotel impact. So we'd like to recommend approval for this agreement.
Move to consent.
Second.
As I moved. Next, sir.
CSRA Clark Hill Committee Tournament Agreement. We've done this for several years now. It's a service agreement for them to put on a series of tournaments out at Wildwood. I believe the number's six or seven. We had to shift this to get this on the fiscal year. So this is why you probably saw one just a couple of months ago. Staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next, sir.
It's an exciting event we have coming. The CSRA, the Mustang Club of America Grand National Show. And I would like to.
Big title.
Big show.
I would like to ask Mike Anker and Don Blackstock, Steve Pruitt, they come up and say a few words about this.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Don.
Steve is the president of the National Mustang Club of America. We're local officers. Well, we're also on the board of directors. And a national.
Yeah, the Mustang Club of America hosts four national shows across the nation every year. This will be the sixth national level show that the CSRA Mustang Club has hosted. The, this one and the previous two have all been in Columbia County. We held three in Richmond County prior to that. This will be our third Grand National Show. So we had six, three nationals and three, we'll have three Grand Nationals. We attract participants from all over the country. We've even had some participate from Germany in some of our shows. It's always an exciting time for the community and the economic impact for the community has always been significant. So we would appreciate your support in this effort.
Yeah, we're looking at room nights, anywhere from eight hundred nights out of four days. Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night. Monday. And then 350 to 400 cars. Counting spectators. And of course, we're asking to have it over here at the New Arts and Performance Center. Also showcase, hey, three years ago, three years ago, we was at Grove Town. Think we hurt ourselves not was beautiful facility, more beautiful, and that I think we will have the city of heavens, or I think we'll pull more people in for activities here in the park.
How will we set up? Where will we set up? Parking lot, where we set up?
Yeah, the parking areas in the plaza, the new lot down by the market. Low into the functions.
Like Mustangs and they're particularly, probably going to be there. Of them.
This is the grand show of the year where everybody wants to be there. Big awards, all the points accumulated from the other three shows. We have, you know, we got one rascal that drives from California, trailer and two cars. Dollars worth of. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's his thing. He would budget.
Don, you guys were rolling on this is really a big event.
Yeah, so he goes to four shows a year across the country, parks in Rocket, California.
We appreciate you guys holding it here.
Oh, yeah, we're looking for.
Sounds exciting. You sound all well behaved. I always appreciate that.
We had a major event in Nashville, Tennessee, the 40th anniversary of the Mustang. I guess I shouldn't talk about car brands, but we took 2,000 cars to downtown Nashville and parked them downtown. I was the last car coming in and the sheriff's department met me on a horse, led me to my parking place. Guys are the most well behaved, courteous, car enthusiasts, among several others that we've seen. It's a fun time for everybody that participates.
We appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Move to consent quickly.
Second.
Yes, sir. So moved. And next we have item purchase.
Yes, purchase of a capital item for Parks and Recreation. This is a tool cat unit used to primarily maintain the greenway. It has lots of different, I guess, that can be added. It can mow and blow and all sorts of stuff. So this will save a tremendous amount of staff time. We can also use this for event setup, staying event setup. And we've been sort of borrowing one of these from other departments, but since we have sort of day-to-day duties now with the greenway, a need for us. So we'd like to recommend approval of this purchase.
Do these do we own?
Various departments, probably three, three or four. Three.
A day-to-day.
Three.
One going day-to-day.
We, we mow it once or twice a week. Try to blow it every other day. Help me. Blow it off every other day, trash cleanup. So how long it is and how, that can take a long time if you don't have the right tools in place, so.
On Columbia Road. I go with greatly used. Endlessly enjoyed.
Appreciate you multiplying the effect with the attachments.
Yes, right. There's a lot of landscaping along, especially along Columbia Road and stuff.
Who's doing it now? How are we getting it done?
We're doing it. Stuff we have.
By hand, backpack blowers and by hand.
Oh. Oh.
I don't think we have any outstanding contracts anymore, do we? And we took it all in-house. And nothing against the people we had contracts with, but our employees are obviously doing a great job because it looks better than it's ever looked. For less money.
Have you been talking to Billy? I think we need.
Second, but I admit I don't get it.
So moved. Any added items? Mr. Driver, any legal? Very good. Yes, staff reports.
Good morning. I submit for your information, the annual summary of our responses and last month, as well as our budget report.
Have commissioners or public comments?
Lockdown. Nine are locked.
Correct. Nothing for executives? So at 8:41, was your turn. Court, you need a few minutes?
Two minutes, two minutes. Good, ladies.
Oh, without a doubt.
Awarded to Public Works and Engineering Services Committee for March 24th. Awarded to Public Works and Engineering Services Committee for March 24th. Already having the invocation and pledge, have three commissioners present. Already having the invocation and pledge, have three commissioners present. Call if the previous meeting minutes are inclined. Motion on those. Call if the previous meeting minutes are inclined. Motion on those.
Move to accept, sir. Move to accept, sir.
Second. Second.
Johnson. Johnson.
Set for your approval, Mr. Chairman. Set for your approval, Mr. Chairman.
No presentations this morning? No presentations this morning?
Mr. Titus will present it to you. Mr. Titus will present it to you. Hey, good morning. The first item we have for your consideration is an agenda item Hey, good morning. The first item we have for your consideration is an agenda item that was tabled from last, last month's committee. It is for a proposal from Tanco Street Lighting that was tabled from last, last month's committee. It is for a proposal from Tanco Street Lighting for streetlight, for our streetlight procedure audit and update. for streetlight, for our streetlight procedure audit and update. There are a lot of, with our current procedure, there are some issues from tracking from the time There are a lot of, with our current procedure, there are some issues from tracking from the time we actually implement a streetlight, how it gets implemented in GIS, and there are some also we actually implement a streetlight, how it gets implemented in GIS, and there are some also some fiscal issues to where we get streetlight districts from developers, and they're not always some fiscal issues to where we get streetlight districts from developers, and they're not always responsible for the entire upfront, upfront cost of the installation of streetlights. responsible for the entire upfront, upfront cost of the installation of streetlights. The county kind of gets stuck with the, with the bill if it does not work out in our favor. The county kind of gets stuck with the, with the bill if it does not work out in our favor. So we wanted this, this firm to come in and evaluate our streetlights, our current policy, So we wanted this, this firm to come in and evaluate our streetlights, our current policy, and in addition, evaluate our safety lighting policy and potentially at the direction of a lighting and in addition, evaluate our safety lighting policy and potentially at the direction of a lighting policy committee appointed by the county, develop a corridor lighting policy and a commercial policy committee appointed by the county, develop a corridor lighting policy and a commercial lighting policy into one comprehensive street lighting. lighting policy into one comprehensive street lighting. Since this was tabled, we've also had discussions with Georgia Power. They would like to get involved, Since this was tabled, we've also had discussions with Georgia Power. They would like to get involved, let us know a little more about the information they have, some other entities they work with let us know a little more about the information they have, some other entities they work with and the procedures they have. They want to make sure that we're getting all the data that they have and the procedures they have. They want to make sure that we're getting all the data that they have from a GIS standpoint and what we're being billed for, paying for. from a GIS standpoint and what we're being billed for, paying for. So staff's recommendation is to actually move this item to full board's debate agenda, So staff's recommendation is to actually move this item to full board's debate agenda, allowing us a few more weeks to work with Georgia Power to get a little more information for you. allowing us a few more weeks to work with Georgia Power to get a little more information for you.
So Georgia Power does have something similar to what they do, whatever, they'll be able to just So Georgia Power does have something that's similar to what they do, or whatever. They'll be able to just get us the information happening in our county. get us the information happening in our county.
In our county, that's correct. In our county, that's correct.
Move to debate. Move to debate.
Second. Second.
So move. So move.
Yes, sir. Staff, Mr. Titus, Ricky Bakley, their staff, they've been working hard on revising Yes, sir. Staff, Mr. Titus, Ricky Bakley, their staff, they've been working hard on revising a speed hump policy. a speed hump policy.
Ricky, come on up in case there's a question. Since he handles this, counting pretty much.
Ricky, come on up in case there's a question. Since he handles this, counting pretty much.
We've been working on this for quite a while. I know we've had some discussions offline with, We've been working on this for quite a while. I know we've had some discussions offline with, with commissioners individually. with commissioners individually. Originally came to you with a proposal. I know it met with some disagreements on how we should Originally came to you with a proposal. I know it met with some disagreements on how we should move forward with our policy. We've gotten here now where a single, a single person on the road move forward with our policy. We've gotten here now where a single, a single person on the road can call and require and ask for a study to be done, and staff will go out and do that. can call and require and ask for a study to be done, and staff will go out and do that. And it'll probably spend 10, 12, 15 man-hours, the time they go out, set the tubes up, collect the data. And it'll probably spend 10, 12, 15 man-hours, the time they go out, set the tubes up, collect the data. We're seeing that 90% of those studies that are done do not warrant speed. We're seeing that 90% of those studies that are done do not warrant speed. This is a perception issue. People perceive speed as an issue on their roads when it might not be. This is a perception issue. People perceive speed as an issue on their roads when it might not be. We spend a lot of staff time on it. We also see a lot of anger between residents. We spend a lot of staff time on it. We also see a lot of anger between residents. One person wants it, one person doesn't. Seen neighborhoods tear themselves apart over speed humps. One person wants it, one person doesn't. Seen neighborhoods tear themselves apart over speed humps. Staff looked at a way of coming up with a policy that allows the request to be made. Staff looked at a way of coming up with a policy that allows the request to be made. It also allows input from the neighbors whether or not we do this process. It also allows input from the neighbors whether or not we do this process. It originally came to you with a policy that said 51% of the neighbors would be required It originally came to you with a policy that said 51% of the neighbors would be required to request the study before it would be done. That's based on information that we get from to request the study before it would be done. That's based on information that we get from the International Transportation Engineers Group, other publications that we've looked at, the International Transportation Engineers Group, other publications that we've looked at, other, other communities, how they do it, just to get buy-in. However, we saw that we got some other, other communities, how they do it, just to get buy-in. However, we saw that we got some requests to, to look at that further, so we moved it down to 25%. requests to look at that further, so we moved it down to 25%. Current policy that you have in front of you today says 25% of the residents on the street Current policy that you have in front of you today says 25% of the residents on the street would have to sign the petition requesting the study to be done. would have to sign the petition requesting the study to be done. Our current policy also does not allow for a way to remove speed humps. This new policy does. Our current policy also does not allow for a way to remove speed humps. This new policy does. Does require, I believe, 100% participation, everybody in the entire neighborhood, oh, I'm sorry. Does require, I believe, 100% participation, everybody in the entire neighborhood, oh, I'm sorry. Everybody on the road with the speed humps must agree that these speed humps are to come out Everybody on the road with the speed humps must agree that these speed humps are to come out for it to be done. It also says that they're not going to go back in for five years. for it to be done. It also says that they're not going to go back in for five years. You can't take them out today and then come back tomorrow and go, oh, they're speeding again. You can't take them out today and then come back tomorrow and go, oh, they're speeding again. I'll jump in here if there's anything else you want to add about this program y'all written. I'll jump in here if there's anything else you want to add about this program y'all written.
The, the removal part, it would be 100% funded by the street, the homeowners, if they wanted it removed. The removal part, it would be 100% funded by the street, the homeowners, if they wanted it removed. Have to be 100% agreed to by the homeowners and funded by the homeowners. Have to be 100% agreed to by the homeowners and funded by the homeowners.
How they going to pay it? How they going to pay it?
So roads, roads and bridges would do an estimate on the raw costs to remove their speed humps, So roads, roads and bridges would do an estimate on the raw costs to remove their speed humps, and we provide that estimate to the homeowners. Have to reimburse the county for that amount. and we provide that estimate to the homeowners. Have to reimburse the county for that amount.
So we would send them a bill that they would have to pay? So we would send them a bill that they would have to pay?
If they, if the whole road wants the speed humps removed, after they've petitioned us to put them in. If they, if the whole road wants the speed humps removed, after they've petitioned us to put them in. They've petitioned us, we put them in, now they come back and say, we don't like them, take them out. They've petitioned us, we put them in, now they come back and say, we don't like them, take them out. Put them in with taxpayer dollars, they come out with their dollars. Put them in with taxpayer dollars, they come out with their dollars.
Right, so if you were a person who was against it, then you have to pay them. Right, so if you were a person who was against it, then you have to pay them.
Whoever can answer this, I'm, I'm looking at the 25% threshold. Is that for the entire run Whoever can answer this, I'm looking at the 25% threshold. Is that for the entire run of the street of the street or is that for an address range? or is that for an address range?
Entire run. Entire run.
Entire run of the street. Entire run of the street.
As, as the policy would, the, the implementation of speed humps would apply to the whole streets. As, as the policy would, the, the implementation of speed humps would apply to the whole streets. They would be installed along the whole corridor. They would be installed along the whole corridor.
I have a couple of questions for us. I, I have a couple of questions for us. It looks like from the way we do it now, citizen calls in and says, hey, I'd like to have a study It looks like from the way we do it now, citizen calls in and says, hey, I'd like to have a study wherever their address is. I think that's where we put the tube down or whatever. wherever their address is. I think that's where we put the tube down or whatever.
Most of the time, we'll, we'll actually ask them where they would like the study conducted Most of the time, we'll, we'll actually ask them where they would like the study conducted because they're the ones that are saying, or speeding. So they may live towards the end, because they're the ones that are saying, or speeding. So they may live towards the end, but when they're walking their dog or something, like people are speeding. but when they're walking their dog or something, like people are speeding. But we get their input. But we get their input.
So now one person can do that. So now one person can do that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Doesn't warrant, nothing happens. We tell them, sorry, didn't meet our, our requirements Doesn't warrant, nothing happens. We tell them, sorry, didn't meet our, our requirements for speed humps. for speed humps. Call us next year or whatever. Call us next year.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But with the new policy, it looks like there's going to be a lot more staff work. But with the new policy, it looks like there's going to be a lot more staff work. Before we go out, a person's going to still call. Y'all do, it looks like, work, additional work. Before we go out, a person's going to still call. Y'all do, it looks like, work, additional work. Then you tell this person you're going to do the study, but you also, you need to get 50, 25, 10, Then you tell this person you're going to do the study, but you also, you need to get 50, 25, 10, whatever we settle on, before we'll do this study. whatever we settle on, before we'll do this study. So we do whatever and give them the paperwork, then they going to have to go out and gather the signatures So we do whatever and give them the paperwork, then they going to have to go out and gather the signatures to meet that. to meet that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So staff's put how much time in to get there, where before staff hadn't put any time in So staff's put how much time in to get there, where before staff hadn't put any time in other than going out and doing the study? other than going out and doing the study?
At that point, it's almost the same because if one person calls, then we're going to take the time At that point, it's almost the same because if one person calls, then we're going to take the time to go out there and lay the tubes out, and we got to come back and pick them up the next day to go out there and lay the tubes out, and we got to come back and pick them up the next day and actually study. Here, you've got to have residents on the road that, that, that the initial. and actually study. Here, you've got to have residents on the road that, that, that the initial.
I don't, I don't think that's the way I read it. I don't, I don't think that's the way I read it.
So, so both with the existing policy that's in place now and what we're proposing, So, so both with the existing policy that's in place now and what we're proposing, there's an initial screening. And one person can call and get an initial screen done. there's an initial screening. And one person can call and get an initial screen done. Same effort in both, both scenarios. Same effort in both, both scenarios.
Now, the one person can start you working and doing all of this stuff, but then if they don't Now, the one person can start you working and doing all of this stuff, but then if they don't get get the 25%, you don't go out and. the 25%, you don't go out and.
You don't, yes, sir. Because once, we don't want, once we do the study, we have to abide by the study. You don't, yes, sir. Because once, we don't want, once we do the study, we have to abide by the study. So you can't do the study and then get the petition, or. So you can't do the study and then get the petition, or.
Let me shift gears. Let me shift gears. Former deputy. Former deputy.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Deputy in Richmond. Deputy in Richmond.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How do you know if somebody's speeding? How do you know somebody's speeding? Write a ticket for speeding in a neighborhood. Write a ticket for speeding in a neighborhood.
Not your regular deputies. State Patrol can, but, but. Not your regular deputies. State Patrol can, but, but.
How many, how many state patrols do we have patrol neighborhoods? How many, how many state patrols do we have patrol neighborhoods?
Yeah, no. Yeah, no.
Oh, ticket can't be written for speeding in a neighborhood. Oh, ticket can't be written for speeding in a neighborhood. But too fast for conditions, reckless driving. But too fast for conditions, reckless driving.
Reckless driving, yes. Reckless driving, yes.
Whatever. Whatever. I, I just have a real concern that doesn't warrant it, we don't put the speed humps in. I, I just have a real concern that doesn't warrant it, we don't put the speed humps in. It, it monitors itself. It doesn't matter whether 100% of the neighborhood or one person says it. It monitors itself. It doesn't matter whether 100% of the neighborhood or one person says it. If people meets the number and they're flying through the neighborhood, it meets it. It warrants it. If people meets the number and they're flying through the neighborhood, it meets it. It warrants it. Regardless, you think the guy that's hauling tail through the neighborhood's going to sign? Regardless, you think the guy that's hauling tail through the neighborhood's going to sign? Yeah, let me sign up that I want to have speed humps. That doesn't make. Yeah, let me sign up that I want to have speed humps. That, that doesn't make. I'm, I'm just, I just don't understand the rationale. I'm, I'm just, I just don't understand the rationale.
How does it relate to, how does it relate to street lights? I know we talked about that before. How does it relate to, how does it relate to streetlights? I know we talked about that before.
Shocks on somebody.
Right, but. Right, but.
Street lights require 75%. Street lights require 75%.
75%? 75%?
That's correct. That's correct.
So in this process, right now, one person can request it and, or did they get it? So in this process, right now, one person can request it and, or did they get it? The other, one person requests it, they tell, we give them a list? The other, one person requests it, they tell, we give them a list?
We create the petition. We create the petition. The input from the rest of the community. The input from the rest of the community.
They did, they collected though, not us, or we collected. They did, they collected though, not us, or we collected.
They collected. They collected.
So they said they, I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear. They say they think people are speeding So they said they, I'm trying to make sure I'm clear. They say they think people are speeding and they want to study, whatever the case may be. and they want to study, whatever the case may be. And so then we're going to say, okay, here's your petition, get 25%, but here's your population And so then we're going to say, okay, here's your petition, get 25%, but here's your population you have to get it from. you have to get it from. So we'll, we'll make it clear to who they have to get it from, and they have to get 25% for us to do the study. So we'll, we'll make it clear to who they have to get it from, and they have to get 25% for us to do the study.
Station back. Patient back. Process the study. Process the study.
How many do we have in queue right now? How many do we have in queue right now?
Forty-eight. Forty-eight.
And we can't dispose of them until we have all the. And we can't dispose of them until we have all the.
Kind of clarification. Kind of clarification.
You're saying that I also think that one person shouldn't dictate to the whole. You're saying that I also think that one person shouldn't dictate to the whole.
They're not dictating. Warrants it, it warrants it. If it don't, throw it in the trash. They're not dictating. Warrants it, it warrants it. If it don't, throw it in the trash. That one person is not dictating. The people that are hauling butt up and down the street. That one person is not dictating. The people that are hauling butt up and down the street. Like you, you might not, you have two sons. I had two sons. I didn't speed through the neighborhood, Like you, you might not, you have two sons. I had two sons. I didn't speed through the neighborhood, but I'd venture to say my two sons did. I'd venture to say. but I'd venture to say my two sons did. I'd venture to say.
I shall admit to nothing on the record.
I'd venture to say your two sons did too. So I, I just, I don't understand the problem that if it warrants it, it warrants it. Now, we have to, we have to approve the radar permit for Columbia County every year, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Well, every.
To ask all the citizens, do we want to shoot radar? Because we could vote that down, and then I think radar would go away, is that correct? Somewhat?
About the permit.
So, I mean, where are we going to draw the line? That, that's just my.
And I have to come at it from a perspective of more than one person should have a say because, I mean, how long do we do a study for?
Four hours.
Twenty-four hour study, and at that point, warrants or doesn't, but what if it's a bad day?
That's not going to change if you had 100 people signing up, whether it's a bad day or not. Who came home, who didn't go to work or whatever. I mean, we do it Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. We don't.
Schools in session.
When school's in session, so. Each times.
One of the big complaints.
And if it's raining, we're not going to do it or any of that stuff, correct?
Well, no, sir. One of the big complaints. Person at the top of the road is only the one going to complain, and then the ones towards the end, towards the end, they would have to go over ten. Home, and get out to go to the store. That's one of the complaints.
Other issue, I guess, to look at and talk about the numbers, the way our study is done, we use a hundred houses, I know that's not right, but a hundred houses, and one car per house, just to. Based, our study says if fifteen of those one hundred people are, are doing ten miles an hour with the speed limit, speed humps go in, that means eighty-five that were not speeding are now being punished, that's the complaint we get.
Are you really being punished?
They, they feel they are, that, that's the complaints we're getting.
This, Mr. Chairman, you live in a neighborhood with speed. You're punished when you're going in and out every day. I lived in a neighborhood with them, I didn't feel punished, do you feel punished, Mr. Titus?
I'd prefer not to have them, but that's.
I believe that it's with as much discussion as we're having right now, I, uh, I'll motion for this debate, so that all the commissioners, each of us have different districts and constituencies on. Needs a discussion of the full body.
I'll second that, if it, full body says no, then, I mean.
So moved, thank you, Mr. Precky. Thank you, Mr. Titus.
Next one we have for you is a, um, Lumbec County Sheriff's Admin Building, I'm gonna let Mr. Prather come up and think about the good work he's done on this project.
How's it doing?
Florence, do you?
I have three items to present to y'all this morning, uh, the first being the Sheriff's Administration Building. As you know, we started this work a couple of months ago, and it's been a long journey. Extremely excited to get the numbers back in this market that we're in right now. So we are, uh, we're looking to start this project, hopefully notice procedures, uh, in September. Um, our lowest and most qualified bidder was S.D. Clifton, amount of one mi, uh, six million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars. So staff recommends approval of that award to S.D. Clifton. In the back of your bag, you'll see the rendering also, if you haven't seen the, what it looks like.
It's part of a sploßed.
Yes.
How close are we to? Budget-wise, how close are we to what we projected?
We're, uh.
Do I even wanna ask that question?
Oh, yeah, no, we're.
No, yeah, absolutely.
We are well under budget, so we've, uh, we've spent a lot of time getting these drawings right, so.
So staff worked really hard, this, this project is under budget, and, and sploß collections, for the first time in our history, looks like we're gonna go all the way to tier three. So the collections are, are coming in very well.
Consent.
Second.
Second, second item I have for y'all's consideration is a, uh, change order for the PAC, this is change order twelve. This is for the outfit of the multipurpose room, and as you recall, in the original bid documents, we left that as a shell, so we're leaving it unfinished because we didn't know exactly what we wanted that room to be. Once we hired Matt Jamison as our manager, he's kinda helped mold that space and figure out how we're gonna use it. Um, he has some really good plans for a, basically a VIP area, as well as some other, um, events that can go in that area, so this is the change order to complete the work in that room, um, with a completion date of no, later than October second.
Our last project within the building?
This is the last big project, this is not the last change order, uh, we're, we still have our, um, the change order directives we've been issuing all along. Um, as you know, this project, uh, had a, a smaller contingency allowance, and we've, gone over that, so we've been doing smaller change orders along the way. So here in the next few months, I'm gonna probably present to you a change order thirteen, will be the last change order, um, and we'll, we'll close that project out. Multipurpose room is on the south side of the building, to the right of the box office. It's a double height, really high space, really nice space. Right, the museum's complete, I mean, it just needs something to go in it.
Probably talk, I, I can just mention that, we've been working with, um, the folks, uh, Nancy Glazer, the executive director of the Augusta Museum of History, and, and she actually has some ideas and some things that we may be able to use. We've compiled a list of kind of the, the types of things that, or not the types of things, we've compiled a list of the periods that we want to, to talk about, and we've just gotta get back with Nancy again and start doing that. Right now, that space will probably be used, uh, for overflow, for events, and stuff like that, till we can get it done, but it will stand up as a museum once we get everything.
Staff recommends approval for, uh, change order twelve and the amount of a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, forty-six, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, forty-six thirty-five cents, and.
Conflict with any of them?
So this is where it gets just a little pushing numbers around, we're awarding seventy-seven days to the contract, the contract has already reached substantial completion. As a paperwork, as a back auditing thing, we have to make up those days to get substantial completion, so, and we also have to make sure the contractor gets this work done by our date of Broadway, so it's kind of a, uh, basically just paperwork on my end.
They are very aware of the dates.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
The third item I have for consi, consideration is the renovations of G-three. The building right down the street here that, uh, we are planning for board of elections to use, um, we're renovating the front side of that, it, as you know, we have early voting there, and people get stacked out the door, so this will help better flow people into the building, um, we provide a new handicap ramp, an accessible door, a canopy, um, and basically just realign how people flow through that building. Uh, we did take some proposals on this project, fell under a hundred thousand dollar public work project, so we denied to bid it, and staff recommends approval for continental construction, the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars to do the work.
Everyone, what?
Yes.
Everyone will enter the building?
Yes, sir, uh, we'll still have a second entrance, but I believe that the majority of people voting will come up that ramp into the building. This is on the front side where the dumpster's at.
I'm just questioning, all, all engineers, maybe help me, if somebody's in a wheelchair and they're seventy years old and they're on, on the hump going in, is that, is that an issue or not?
Well, we've, we've designed it for handicap accessibility, I mean, that, that ramp is.
Get it, but if the line is two hundred people. Sitting on the ramp.
That may be a procedure with board of elections, how they handle.
I've seen them come, they have somebody watching, they'll, they'll push those people as long as it's ADA compatible.
Yes.
It's gonna be staying on the ramp while you're moving, I got you.
Yeah, as you're going up the ramp, and.
Yeah. Yeah, we can work, Nance have to work an issue out of house, you can hold that place for that person, or move them directly to the front.
They bring them in, I, I saw them do it.
And once this is done, just for the entire commission to, to understand, once this is completed, early voting's been so successful here, board of elections will completely relocate their offices there, so they'll be occupying this space going forward, uh, we're remodeling the rest of the space interior there as well, so we'll reassign the space down the hill.
Move to consent.
Second.
Thank you.
So moved. Tracy?
All ready? I'm good, y'all ready for me this morning?
Ross?
I have a long list of items for you.
Sure do.
Um, first item.
Take Billy Long to train you how to spend that money, did it?
No, I, I, I think I'm spending it faster than he likes.
I'm sure you spend the best, and he likes.
Um, the first item I have is, uh, the laydown yard, where we, we have a contract dated, uh, three seventeen twenty twenty with, um, Blue Water Engineering. Um, looking at the project, uh, we do some work out there at, at night, and I, I felt like it was a safety issue not to have lighting, so I asked Blue Water to go back and look at their contract and give us an additional price to add lighting, and in that discussion, we talked with them, we could cut some costs by doing a pre-engineered building also, so, um, between the lighting addition and saving a couple thousand dollars in a pre-engineered building, um, there's a increase to their engineering fee of six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars to move up to a total fee of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty dollars, and, uh, staff recommends approval of the revised proposal to Blue Water.
Ten.
Second.
I'm not voting, I'm outta here.
Gonna leave just before the track loader.
No more.
I quit.
Um, we currently have, uh, our second item's the purchase of a Bobcat, um, compact track loader, we currently have a old nineteen ninety-two Holland at the Reed Creek, um, wastewater plant, causing us a lot of issues, it's really kinda small for the job, so we wanna purchase a, uh, Bobcat, um, on Sourcewell pricing for seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars to replace this unit, and actually, we wanna repurpose that unit, but I'll get to that in a second, um, to replace this unit, we're, um, reason we wanna use the Bobcat is we already used one at Little River, we have multiple accessories for this that we can share between the two plants, um, to save us some money, and, um, so this'll be a, a good piece of equipment to do the mowing, to do, um, deal with the drying beds, and, and multiple uses that we have for it, and also the existing equipment in nineteen ninety-two Holl, Holland, since we've recently taken over the Harlem plant, we wanna repurpose that, uh, fix it and use it at that plant. So staff recommends approval of purchase via contract pricing with Sourcewell.
Talking about. Attachments. At a Holland. Time and effort and all that, how mu, how much money are you talking about?
I'm not sure, I don't know if Nick or John can help me out, I'm not sure the cost of those attachments.
I, I, I understand that, but my question is, oh, do we need the attachments where we're gonna use this Bobcat?
What, what does a, what does a bucket cost?
Yeah, what is a bucket, or whatever you're gonna use, so we're not.
A frail, a frail lower cost. What's a four-way bucket go for? And a, how about a cut and hit? Bob Green?
Can I get you, I, I know y'all's folks don't do this, but my guys love to ride to the warehouse, come back to the job, and then, oh, well, I forgot, and go back to the warehouse, I know we don't do that on county, but my guys do. Hey. Everybody's smart enough to figure that one out, so, uh. Please don't bind the thing, and I'd like to ask that y'all look for whatever attachments that we think we may need, and let's just look at, I don't think in the scheme of things, you're talking about a whole lot of money.
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I, I now understand that, have, having some property, I now understand why farmers have five and six tractors, because the, eh, the model ages out, the implements are not compatible, as he says, with, with what you just bought, and, uh, I, I'm also in favor, if you need something else to future-proof it. I'm, I'm for that, then we can move this to consent.
And we can move forward with this, Mr. Chairman, and then if you, if, if we can get the prices on the other stuff, and then we either have the ability to purchase those, and if they're outside of my approval, then I'll contact you according to our new policy, and then you can approve those.
They, they already had equipment, but they took it, so we no longer have that equipment.
So they, they kept their public works department, we bought their water and sewer, they kept their public works department, so the equipment that we bought from them was all related to water and sewer, if they had a tractor or a piece of equipment, they kept that with public works. Wasn't part of the deal. We didn't want it.
Say it.
All right, move to consent.
The next item I have is a, a bid for, uh, electrical modifications at both the Clarksville and, uh, and the Blanchard, uh, water treatment plants, um, we, uh, took a bid from R.D. Brown in the amount of, uh, one million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for this project, uh, engineer's estimate was, uh, two and a half million on the project, so we're well under budget, and staff recommends, uh, acceptance of the bid and entered, entering into a contract with R.D. Brown.
This, uh. We discussed this earlier, this was not. In our budget prior to the acquisition of the Harlem?
No, no, this is, this is a separate, this is on our water treatment plants.
This is on our, on our water.
Yeah, this, this is one that was a part of the extension and renewal, um, project going a couple of years back.
This is a budgeted item, sir?
Uh, yeah, it's part of extension renewal, yes, sir.
Move to consent, sir.
Move.
The next item we have is a, uh, engineering proposal from Cranston, um, the building that we're in, uh, Building A, at the water utility, we've been in it about ten years now, and, uh, there needs to be some painting, some touch-up work, uh, pair of few items that we've, we've budgeted for this coming year, um, but, uh, there are some settling cracks in the wall, there's a, there's a place in the wall where the tilt-up panels, you can kinda see through and see where it's kinda pulling out from the wall, so you can see the rebar that ties everything together, and we just wanna get a structural engineer out there to take a look at it, say everything looks good before we, um, start cleaning things up, you know, caulking things, you know, hiding cracks, those kinda items, so, uh, we have a proposal from Cranston to, uh, for structural services in an amount of four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, um, staff recommends the approval of the proposal.
They move to consent.
All right. Um, the. Next item is, uh, Sawdust Road water line proposal. We have, excuse me, we have a, uh, engineering proposal from Infrastructure Systems Management, uh, to provide a twelve-inch water line to connect our old Louisville Road ground storage tank and pumping station to the Sawdust Road tank, um, currently, we're, we're going out after, this is in Harlem, currently, we go out there and we have zero chlorine residuals at the tank, um, we're just having trouble moving water in and out, because the tank only has, you know, it's a half a million gallon tank, and it only has two six-inch lines feeding it, um, which is extremely small for that size of tank, and, uh, so we wanna route a twelve-inch line to get water into that area, but also be able to move water out of that area, so we can, you know, fill and drain the tank and get proper circulation in the tank, and it's about thirty-one thousand feet of, uh, of water line, and, um, and ISM proposes to provide these services at, uh, five point five percent, uh, estimated hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in engineering fees, and, uh, staff recommends approval of this proposal.
No. Ben?
The, uh, next item is a, uh, force main, uh, to Oochie Creek. This, uh, this force main is gonna go from I-twenty Athlin Harlem Highway, that intersection, travel down a power line easement all the way to the, uh, Oochie Creek, uh, sewer, sewer main, so we're gonna pump in it, it'll have three lift stations along the way. Um, what this sewer does is gives us a lot of flexibility in that area, um, we have, we have a lot of development that's gonna be going on through there, um, all the way back to Oochie Creek, it allows us to take some water from the industrial, or some sewer from the industrial park area, and maybe even Harlem, and, uh, pump it back on a temporary basis, we have some participation from developers, because they were already gonna be putting lift stations along this line, so, um, we're able to leverage that, to install this, to give us some flexibility as they grow, and as a temporary purpose too, if we have issues that we need to transfer sewer, but from Kewke Creek temporarily, till we can kinda catch up with upgrades with that plant, we can transfer them into this line, um, or we can transfer some sewer temporarily from Harlem, till we're able to get other things in place, and, uh, you know, like, we've, we've had, uh, cut out development in Harlem and put a moratorium on that, so we may be able to use this, we'll be able to use this line, and it's a quicker fix, you know, we're talking a year and a half versus, you know, three to three and a half years for the plant project than for a, uh, gravity sewer line, so doing this, uh, force mains a lot faster project, so this'll allow us to temporarily do some things and give us flexibility until some of that development catches up and fills up the line, um, so we're looking at putting twelve and sixteen inch line in, and, uh, and the force main, and engineering fees are proposed at six and a half percent of the project, or three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and staff recommends approval of this proposal.
Three projects, I think. Forward. Development projects.
Yeah, there was, uh, seventy-five townhomes, twenty-eight townhomes, and then a three hundred and twenty-two lot subdivision that we, to this point, we've said no to, because we just don't have the sewer capacity available.
Projects coming on.
Yeah.
They don't have capacity, till we're.
Till we're able to solve some of those sewer issues.
How long?
Um, probably a year and a half, two at max, um, we can go ahead and, and get this going, and it's kind of a temporary fix, 'cause really it's to kinda help with industrial park, if we get a big user, it's, it really gives us just a lot of flexibility, but eventually, this line will be filled up with the development of the Bird Track and some of the other tracks along that, along that path, we have a six hundred and ninety-five home development that they're requesting now, um, that'll pump into this line also, so, I mean, we'll utilize it for that and get that development participation, but until they build out, we can use it for other purposes, so we wanna go ahead and control how fast we get this in, and where we put our lift stations, so we can temporarily use it for our purposes and, and give us some benefit, and not just for development.
And we had to discuss this in, in court, a lot of the infrastructure out in Harlem was aging and needed repair.
Yes, sir.
Our approach to it, to politely say, this sewer where it belongs?
Mm-hmm.
And avoid astrophe?
Yeah.
Ben?
Thank you. Uh, the next item is, uh, the Kewke Cr, Creek, uh, Water Pollution Control Plant Expansion. Um, currently now, we're, we're doing, our Kewke Creek plant is not seeing a lot of, a lot of use, but with Amazon coming on, it's gonna add another eighty thousand gallons a day with. with, with, um, some that we're transferring some of the load from Harlem to help us out temporarily, to, to get our Harlem plant within compliance, because the rainy days, we're almost doubling our, our plant flow. And, um, so we're, we're seeing a lot of growth at this plant, and a lot of extra usage at the plant. So we're wanting to expand the plant. Green Point comes on, we'll add another, when it's fully built out, fifteen years from now, add another three hundred and fifty thousand gallons to, to this basin. So we're looking at expanding this plant from three hundred thousand gallons a day to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons a day. We're gonna reuse some of the existing plant and repurpose it, save some money on the plant. So we have a proposal for engineering fees of seven percent, which is six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in engineering fees, and staff recommends approval of this proposal.
Wouldn't say move forward, it was...
Well, it was talked about, it was talked about.
It was presented and denied.
I think there was a lot of, Mr. Chairman, I think there was a lot of concern about upgrading this plant, would open up development that would be outside of our growth management plan? That's not the case. The, the, the engineering that we're talking about doing with this plant, expanding this capacity, prepares us for the future. It doesn't have anything to do with allowing all of this capacity to be used today. This is something that has to be done for the future of Columbia County, and, and it's a great plant, there's no sense in not having, you know, what we need there for the future.
I think there was some concern from the Public Commission. Us doing that, creating an industrial park, thought, because there were several large, large tracks, people talking about residential development, and I think the concern from the commissioners were that those guys jump on board and get approval, and then use up allotment that we're develop, uh, a whole lot of money, develop an industrial park and use up the sewage from there, was, I think, the concern.
It was, and, and we heard that concern loud and clear, which is why you've seen Mr. Gordon come back with some of his other recommendations. You know, the, the fact that we're looking to increase capacity, that Uche Creek basin means that we're going that direction and not a gravity to Kioki right now, because we, we heard exactly the concerns of the, of the commission, and, and understand that, what y'all are trying to accomplish there. So that won't happen now in this scenario, right off the bat, because we're, we're actually, like I said, taking that a different direction. I think if we were, if we were saying, increase the capacity and let us put in a gravity sewer line down two-twenty-one, then absolutely, that would probably be something you'd be very concerned with, but we understand that, we're not making that recommendation.
I was gonna add one thing to that. One of, one of my concerns is, as, as the development authority comes to me and says, do we have sewer capacity with everything going on with Harlem and all the other things? I might have to say no, because with, you know, they have plants that are looking for, do y'all have fifty thousand gallons a day? Do you have a hundred thousand gallons a day? And we just don't have that capacity without expanding, so it really does hurt our industrial park not to have that upgrade.
On spinoff, I've talked to you about, and I appreciate you sending a lot of information. I didn't know, all engineers get to change the price every month, obviously. That's a monthly deal, pretty sweet. Tenage, I get. Something's a little harder, it may cost a little bit, whatever, but I understand. If there anybody else aside maybe Turnip Seed, or Zale, or whoever gets a project, is there anybody else that we allow to look at that project? Because if, if this, people, somebody may want to do it for five and a half, I don't know. You know, that's in the scheme of a big project, millions of dollars, that's not a whole lot, but a couple hundred thousand dollars, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, we look at other companies, or is, is a certain engineering firm locked in for a certain type of project? I, I just don't know where we're at on that.
No, sir, we don't. Typically, you don't bid out the engineering services, but we go out and evaluate our engineers, and we, and ones we have, we have for, because we trust them. We trust they're gonna give us good value with our project, and it might be a little bit of a long story, but if you'll bear with me, the best way that I know to explain that is to kind of tell a story. Is I designed a water treatment plant for Breezy Hill back in two thousand and eleven, and, um, and at the same time, another engineering firm, a large one, Black and Veatch, was designing a, a project for Woodruff Row Buck. And we were kind of coordinating, because we're planning, our schedules matched up, we're planning on bidding it at the same time, and the same contractors, you know, were gonna be bidding both projects. But we worked to where we were bidding it two weeks before the Black and Veatch project, and our plant was a four-point-seven million gallon plant, and actually, we designed it for nine-point-four million gallons. It had the filtering capacity of the basins, it just didn't have the pipes and the pumping capacity to remove it from the plant. That project bid at four, or at nine-point-four million dollars, that Breezy Hill project. Well, the Woodruff Row Buck project, which is a four-million-gallon plant, there were no expansion built in, there was nothing, was a, was a twenty-six-million-dollar project. Now, you know, they could have had a five percent fee and still made one and a half times the money that we made. You know, so I don't just look at what the engineer's percentage fee is, I look at what kind of value they're, they bring to the project. Turnip Seed is, uh, they've already called and said, hey, we see you have these other, when we did the cost estimate, we worked on it, they say, we see you have that force main, can we temporarily put some water or some sewer there, so we can rehab the SBRs and the clarifiers, save you a million dollars? So, I mean, there are things, that's more than their fee. So, I mean, there are things they're looking at to help us out, and it kind of shoots themselves in the foot. If they just put a plant right over here, it'd been easier on them, and they'd have gotten more of a fee. So it's a, it's a level of value they give us, a level of trust we have with them, so we don't just look at what their percentage is, we kind of look at the whole picture and, and what we're used to in our history with them.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I know y'all do, and always have. I really appreciate what our facilities department has done. Right, and where we, where we are today, all faults of it. I'm sitting here looking at dollars, and a couple of million and a half in fees, whatever, so definitely gonna question, and ask the question.
I appreciate it, because sometimes we miss stuff, and we need to, we need to hear that, so I don't have an issue. I just, this particular job, I wasn't expecting necessarily a question, because I really thought it should have probably been seven and a half percent, it should have been a little higher. That was the next one on the list, I was really expecting, go through this with you.
Rather than go ahead and beat half the conversation up, or whatever.
Yes, sir.
So I, I know it's things that we have to look at, and we have to move. Things are at a, cost are high, and, I guess we don't settle on this fee until the end of the job, so if everything goes down, now, their price will be dropping.
Yes, sir. They usually bid about eighty percent of the, of the job, and then when it bids, they make adjustments.
Ben, sir.
The next item is a engineering proposal for the Uche Creek Harlem Interceptor. We have a proposal from Turnip Seed to provide a gravity sewer from our existing, existing Harlem plant. We're planning on eventually closing that plant down in gravity and all the way to our, to the Uche Creek sewer line. Works out well, because Grove Town just built their plant, and they're taking a million gallons a day off of it, so we have that capacity to, to tie in there. We have a, a proposed engineering fee of seven percent at six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars from Turnip Seed Engineers. The staff recommends approval of this proposal.
As you said, on their little deal here, is over above what the recommended.
It is, yes, sir. And that was one, when I first saw it, I said, you know, it kind of came in at the same time as the other proposal, and when I first saw it, I liked that. It was probably really a six and three-quarter in my mind, from just experience. Uh, and it was a little high, but I didn't really question it, because I felt like we're getting a good deal from the other one, so I was just like, I, I didn't go back and, and negotiate down on this. We can go back to them and ask for a lower fee, but there are some issues on it that do prove to be a challenge, the tie-in to the plant's gonna be a little bit of extra work, the, you know, we're gonna need to measure flow, we're gonna need to measure wet well capacity where we tie in. Also, the, there's some really flat areas on the sewer that are gonna require a little bit of additional calculations and work, so I didn't think it was outrageous, but I did think maybe we were, you know, a little bit high on it, so.
Good time to go back and just kind of shake them up a little bit, and let them know that we're looking at it, and, hey, can you relook at that fee?
Yes, sir, I'll be...
Is this urgent, that we need to move this forward?
No, sir, we have that other one going to consent, so that'll buy us a little bit of time with this, so I can go back and, and talk with them about this one, that's not a problem.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think if, if it'd be okay with you, if you're okay with moving this item to debate, move it to debate, let us go back and try to renegotiate the fee, and if we can bring you a lower fee, then you may be more comfortable with that. And if not, then we can debate the seven percent fee at that time. I agree with you, though, I think, I think we ought to go back and, and, and try to do that, and we will let them know that one of their projects moved to consent, the other one's gonna be debated by the board, and if they want to adjust that fee, then it may get more favorable attention.
Yes, sir, yeah. Move to debate.
Go move, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. All right, and the last item I have is Nicole's Lane Sewer Extension. Mr. Carl Miller came to us, he's having septic issues at his plant, or at his house, and he wants us to extend our sewer line over. We ran a quick cost estimate in the office, and it's roughly ten thousand dollars to do that. He's, he, we negotiated back and forth, and he agreed to a seventy-five-hundred-dollar a fee for that, and typically, you know, when, when the homeowner puts that kind of money in, we waive their tap fees, so staff recommends acceptance of the seventy-five-hundred dollars from Carl Miller, and to approve waiver of a tap fee to allow Mr. Miller to connect to the sewer line once construction's complete.
Go move.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hit us.
Yes, sir. First item we have for you is Resolution 2136 to amend Maple Ridge Section Two, Streetlight District Number Three Twenty Seven A. We had a resident reach out to us, asked us to reevaluate the lighting in that district to see if an additional light was warranted. Georgia Power did so, and they came back and said that it was warranted, and they provided an, uh, an annual cost to install that, or upfront pole cost to install that of four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and nineteen cents, with an annual utility cost of two-hundred-and-ten dollars and seventy-two cents for that additional light.
For property owners.
That's correct. So staff recommends adoption of Resolution Twenty One Thirty Six to amend by district.
This doesn't require a reading, does it?
So, so you're not changing the fee, it's just adding additional light?
Move to consent, sir.
Go move.
The second item we have for you is an easement plat for Michael Seaworth. This is off of Furious Ferry Road, next to Publix, Thirty Five Oh Five Professional Circle. This is for the acceptance of utility improvements to include two sewer easements as depicted on a plat prepared by James G. Swift and Associates, dated December third, two thousand and twenty, and revised on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Staff recommends acceptance of the improvements.
Ben?
The next item is an easement plat for West Grove LLC. This is at five thousand three Steiner Way. This is for the acceptance of utility improvements to include a sewer easement as depicted on a plat prepared by James G. Swift and Associates, dated July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is out at Steiner Way, near Walmart at Horizon South. This is basically, there was a sewer system installed behind the shopping center, it was never deemed to the county, they're asking for additional taps. In order for Water Utility to approve those additional taps, they need to deed this sewer to the county. Staff recommends acceptance of the utility improvement.
Forward return.
Something, usually when we see this, it's left off the, the plat, they're in a hurry to open up, we try to help them out.
Yeah, I've asked that, but I generally follow up, I would think, or we would know that they were gonna follow up, or...
I think in this situation, it wasn't a huge issue, because it's one sewer line, it was basically, there's individual tap going to our manhole, but once they want to start putting additional taps to it, it had to be public. So in this case, I would think it was probably just one of those things where we wanted it, but they didn't want to give it to us, and we went, okay, have fun. Now they have to come back and... Erling has done a good job with his staff, plan review, eyes their crew, they've done a lot better job of making sure we get these easy places before we give any kind of, you know, Paul's group works well, I think Paul stepped out, Paul's group works well.
Well, my point is, you know, I know the guy that's spending the money to try and build the business to get open, he's ready to open, and the only thing that's holding him up is this, because the chair didn't do what they were supposed to on a timely basis. I hate to see the guy not being able to open and start generating some revenue, but every time, they tell you, oh, I'll have that to you.
I'll have it tomorrow, if you'll just do us, I'll bring it to you tomorrow.
Or whatever, but this, somehow, I don't know how we would alert it to...
Well, staff has been working, Kyle, Scott, Paul, they've been working with a new procedure that we're gonna try to put in place, where we can get a lot of this stuff handled early on in the project, so that we're not dealing with it at the eleventh hour. They're still working through some minor details, but hopefully they'll bring that to you soon, a problem of the past.
Hey.
Well, the contractors know that, engineers know that, the guy that's paying the bill may not necessarily know that.
Most of them do.
And then he's caught, and he's hung up. He's the guy that's cutting the interest check on five million or ten, whatever, whatever the amount. And then he's at, at the mercy of whenever, get it and get it through our staff and do whatever. I hate having to call y'all and say, hey, can you help this guy out? I mean, he gonna get it to you next week, whatever, I promise you. And then he lets me down.
That process is gonna change, where they have to give us all that stuff early, early in the project, so that we're not at the eleventh hour asking for it.
Did we ever motion this?
Ben?
Okay, the next item we have is a final plat for Champion's Overlook Section One B off of Riverwood Parkway. This is directly south of the, the roundabout inside the gate at Riverwood Parkway, it abuts the south side of the roundabout. This is for acceptance of final plat and improvements to include the sanitary sewer systems for, for Champion's Overlook Phase One B, along with easements associated with the improvements as specified and depicted on a plat prepared by Agency Land Surveying Incorporated dated July tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Staff recommends acceptance of improvements to include, now, the recommendation sheet says to include the storm and the sanitary sewer improvements, but it's only for the sanitary sewer improvements, the storm is private, so that's, staff recommends acceptance of improvements to include only the sanitary sewer.
Ben, sir.
Go move.
The next item we have is a rejection of bid number twenty twenty-one oh thirty-one for L-MIG Safety Striping of Various Roads. Staff is seeking approval to reject this bid. When we first bid it, we thought that it was gonna come in over our budget, total budget with our match is a little over two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars, however the bids came in, around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So when we first bid it, we pulled out of, out of all the signage improvements and upgrades, we'd like to rebid it and include those in the bid as well, and do it all at one time. Staff recommends approval of the rejection of this bid, so that we can rebid the project to include the, the signage upgrades.
Ben?
The next item we have for you is a professional services contract with infrastructure consulting and engineering for construction inspection services on Lewiston Road Widening Project. In October of two thousand and twenty, the board... In October of 2020, uh, the board approved a sampling and materials testing contract with Wooden Partners. Uh, this is for Construction Inspection Services to assist our inspectors, uh, out at Lewiston. It's a large project. There's a lot of moving parts. We have one full-time inspector on that job. If there are two or three considerable things going on, that one inspector gets stretched thin and could miss things. This is to bring on an additional full-time inspector from Infrastructure Consulting and Engineering. Uh, there is currently a, a budgeted line item in the, uh, the TIA budget of $1.6 million. Uh, so between the sampling, materials testing and this, if so approved, uh, we would still have 570,000 estimated remaining in the TIA line item for, uh, construction services. Staff recommends approval of the contract with ICE for Construction Inspection Services on the project. Now the approval of this will just be for approving their, their rates, their, their inspector rates, saying that they can send these inspectors at our discretion to the jobs and bill the county accordingly. We estimate, uh, a total cost for the project of about 530,000.
Inspector won't be on the job all the time.
There will be one full-time inspector. There's going to be a, a, a schedule of about five other different types of senior engineers, uh, bridge inspectors that we can pull as needed, but there's going to be one full-time inspector on the job 40 hours a week.
This is a TIA funded?
This is a TIA project that is TIA reimbursable and that's correct. And there is already a line item for it.
Uh, the 570 remain. What will that go to?
Kyle's got in the budget, I think 1.6 million for testing and inspection. So we're spending a million of that, million, two, something there, we're estimating. The remaining 500,000 will go towards any over, any other overruns we have in our, our project. Um, if there's money left over at the very end, everything's paid for, that money goes back to the TIA program as a whole, to fill in shortfalls in other TIA projects throughout the region. And when all TIA projects are done, whatever's left over gets divvied up amongst all the counties according to our LARP formula. They are basically the way our discretionary money comes to us now. They just give us more discretionary. So if we don't spend it, we give away most of it. Correct.
Good to consent.
Go move.
The last item we have for you, uh, similarly, uh, with Lewiston Road, this is for Furious Ferry. Uh, staff realized that, uh, we could actually advertise for construction materials testing and construction inspection services together and just hire one full-time inspector. And that full-time inspector could do both services if that firm was qualified to do that, if that inspector was qualified to do that. We could save money using that, uh, approach. Um, so this is for the same thing on Furious Ferry to include materials testing, um, and sampling along with construction inspection services. Uh, this is a contract with I, Infrastructure Consulting Engineering or ICE, the same firm we're hiring for Lewiston Road. Uh, this would, we've estimated that their total cost would be about 800,000, whereas we have a $1 million line item for construction services on this project. Again, this is TIA reimbursable. This project, we would get 3% of whatever we spend, uh, back, pay back to us for admin fee. Staff recommends approval of the contract with ICE.
Good to consent, sir.
Thank you.
I've included the year-to-date, uh, budget report and the, uh, water and sewer construction projects report. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Obligation, talking about forward here.
He's fine.
Is this infrastructure, some of the American?
Yes, sir. So, so we're in the process, we're in the process now of looking at, at the water utilities fund balances and then also looking at, uh, qualifying projects that we can use the Rescue Act money for. Um, and, uh, water utility's also applied for a grant. So we're going to look at that, possibly use some of that as grant money. Uh, but we're, we're very comfortable with, with the level of, of the amount of projects we have and the, and the amount of funding. There would be no need to, to bond this or borrow any money for anything that we have on the horizon.
You want to add anything, Stacy?
Sounds good. Good answer?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you. Any questions?
No, sir.
All right. Any, uh, a public comment? Executive set items, we have a couple.
Yes, sir.
For, uh, January 9, 45.